Just won't transmit from Florida, Tammy. It just won't.
Then it wouldn't transmit from Florida.
Well, that's great. We made trouble from access to.
But it was a different system.
I know.
They were gone.
We have to restart it early.
We got more than six.
I think so.
About seven or eight.
Yeah.
On the driveway. Mine don't ever pile up. It just comes in here. Except now I got about 12 foot on our floor.
There's lots of snow out there.
God, I never fail. I even cleaned it out to the middle of the.
You guys switch seats on me.
Who's gonna put your table back up?
Just like church.
Yeah.
I know.
Sorry, Bob.
I was gonna sit down there and then John made me move. I didn't make it.
Oh, not really, because we need to wait till seven.
I got these.
Everybody sits in the same spot, yeah.
I tell you what, people come in church and bring them. They just stand around there until they move.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't get a chair that's rolling down.
Thing is, see, it used to be they paid that pew rent. That's how they did it.
We can do with that snow up on the.
All right.
Across from Charlie's. Which Charlie?
She can see it here.
Oh, we'll load it.
Yeah.
Okay. How much have left on ministry? Is this here or?
This is here in the west. Little bit.
We can finish tonight, Larry. We can do it tomorrow. It's whatever you want to do.
It's what everybody else wants to do.
Why don't you just finish this and we'll do that tomorrow?
Okay.
So is your heater working?
Yep.
I knew that was a dumb question. One thing about them heaters I got, they always did good fills in dryers.
No.
Best when you're pulling a tractor. Best when you're pulling the tractor with the snow over. Working the tractor.
I got a bus that heater works. I bet I don't go four miles and the kids want that heater.
Oh, is he glass or hurry?
It's hot.
He'll sit over there.
Yeah, but he will sit right there.
That's good.
Who sits over there?
Better than freezing.
Tammy.
Tammy. She's gone too.
Those two are gonna be gone.
Yeah, but you're welcome to sit up there.
You bet. You can sit here. I'll move.
We haven't got the new chairs ready for you and Royce yet.
Are they using chairs?
Well, they wanted new chairs, because I don't like the metal chairs when they're put out.
We feel left out.
This whole concept is to include everyone.
There you go.
Why don't you try to consult though?
No.
Tammy?
Larry. See that? Dig that home and carry it.
Are you there, Tammy?
Yeah, I'm here, but I don't know if she can hear me or not.
No. Oh. No. I got you on my speakerphone on my cellphone.
Yeah, I can hear you in the media just fine on my computer.
Okay.
Well, then we'll get started.
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and I think we'll just get started then. Can you hear?
I can hear just fine.
Okay. My pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They're on.
Oh, the cameras are going?
Yep.
Are you gonna beat me to it?
But you're busy. Call meeting order. Roll call.
Art, Wolman.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Mayor Westgar.
Yes.
Reese. Here, Moller. And it sounded like Whitey probably would not be here tonight either. If he is, it'll be late.
No one here for public forum. We need consent agenda, any additions, corrections?
There, I would ask that we'd add one bill to the bill listing. See the bill listing all there? So Mayor Westgar had done all the work on the council table. And just the only charges, the only costs so far have just been materials. And John did have some personal material and then a little bit of, not a bit of time. Anyway, there's a request for $500 spent for payment. And we had 500 bucks for payment to Whispering Woods is the name of the business.
I'll make a motion. Is that what I need to do?
I'll say.
Roll call. Is this approving all the bills then?
This would be for consent agenda, if that's okay, would you include that?
Yeah.
Okay. Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Moller.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on the proposed annexation. Does anyone need public input?
There has been no public input.
Larry, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We want a resolution 1808, that is the resolution to annex.
Yep. Both sides. So Tammy had a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Moller. Wolman.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
So just.
You're in.
You've just annexed your property.
Okay.
And we thank you for that. So just again, this area is the land that we're purchasing from Larry. And then also extending that land straight south to the corporate limits. So Larry is annexing a few acres of his farmland that we aren't purchasing them to. So that makes it contiguous with the existing corporate limits that way.
Thank you, Larry, for your cooperation.
While we're here, though, talking some lagoon stuff. Can we take a look at those letters that were on the table tonight? Hey, Bill, there's another copy up there. I think it's Whitey's chair.
I understand.
Fast one for Larry? Oh, you got it? All right, thank you. Just first, that first thing talks about the quantity of dirt that's needed for the project. What this first letter's gonna say is that they've raised the height of the bottom of the lagoon. They needed to raise that one foot higher than what they thought they were going to. And because they need to have enough fall to get the outlet into the creek. The outlet cannot be submerged in the creek. So they have designed this so that the bottom of the lagoons they put higher than what they had initially thought. Well, that affects the total amount of dirt that's needed for the project. And this would indicate that they think they're about 8,000 cubic yards short on dirt. And to do that then, to come up with that amount of dirt, I mean, it is coming up with dirt off-site. Or we have arrangements in Larry's purchase agreement that Larry would sell us clay dirt for $2 a ton. It's just a question of figuring out where we can come up with a good spot to get clay out of there. And then we get, we being the city or the contractor actually doing it. They strip the black dirt, get clay out of there, and put the black dirt back so that it's still in farmable condition when they're done. And then, so ultimately, the city's buying clay then $2 a ton. As I talked to Bob Beanster about this today. What we talked about was that they would put this in the bid documents as an option. Basically, the bid document would then say, we think we're gonna be 8,000 yards short on dirt. The contractor needs to supply that dirt. Or we have an arrangement with the property owner where they could purchase it. But it'd actually likely be the contractor then purchasing the dirt. But that's all, of course, rolled into the big cost of the project then. You know, as far as the extra cost, you know, Bob Beanster would tell you that it's not unexpected. He said that he put in his initial estimate, he put in 10,000 yards of borrowed dirt. So it's not that it would be an additional cost. You know, over and above what the cost estimate was. Really, that's about it on that, though, as far as any of the information. We just got this letter today. Any questions on that? Any comments on that, Larry, about how that works out?
Well, we just have to find a place to get the dirt, I guess, if that's what needs to be done. And we can find a place to get it, we can strip it off and get it put back so it's farmable, I guess. You know, I don't know how we're gonna determine, or how that's gonna be determined, but.
So if you strip the clay out, then what you do to fill it back in, you just, I mean, you're gonna lower the lay of the land.
You'd only take so much off, say like if you took a foot off or something like that, a foot of clay. You know, so you can't have a big.
There won't be a big hole, will there?
Yeah, it's gonna have to take, it's gonna have to be taken over, you know, several acres, I would think. But you have some pretty good idea of where there's an area that could be leveled off, or? Not really, but.
Can you test bore that, though? Could you test?
They can. And we do have test borings of the property. Okay, now I haven't looked at them before. But there was only three or four bore holes done. And I'm not sure which area of the property they were done on. So anyway, I need more information, but like I said, it just came up today.
So is the proposal of the dirt within the annexed land, or that doesn't really matter?
This would be out of the annex land. It was Meyer standing.
But when the time comes to get that dirt, you're gonna be around, we'll be around to make sure that everything is done to your satisfaction, I would think.
Right.
We're not just gonna rip it out and say, here you go.
Well, they didn't do any boring off-site, right, Scott?
Not off of that.
Post.
You know, what was that, you know, 23 acre land parcel, you know, they were all, everything was included within that, but I'm just not sure what, I didn't look at that report.
If I remember right, I don't think they bored off-site, and so there's no borings on my property to look for clay to borrow.
So that's gonna have to be done too.
Second part of this letter that was on the desk tonight. You're still there, Tammy?
Make sure you stay there.
Yeah. Dave got called away, so we're, we still have forum, but we're down to. Take a look at the correspondence in regards to project timing. That we still have not received this thing called the Fonzie. It has a finding of no significant impact. That's environmental and archaeological, several different types of impact. That would, you know, all that you're going by is what best guess might be as far as what Bob Beanster's experience would lend to. And he's still on board with the notion that they can have this Fonzie here within the next weeks. And so did you get that email that I sent you this morning about that timeline? Okay, because that's what I wanna take a look at, is that timeline. That even though we may not have this approved Fonzie, that we would still potentially still be going up to bid on this timeline. With the expectation that it's gonna happen. And, you know, Bob wasn't too excited about getting up to bid before we had that. Just because it's some additional uncertainty for the bidder's bidding. They feel pretty confident about this now, that everything is falling together, it's just falling together really slow. We were waiting for this clearance from Chippewa, the state historic preservation folks. Well, their time limits have ran, so they won't have any additional impact input on that now. And then they're waiting for some clearance from NRCS about taking ag land out of production. That I think they're still waiting on that, then everything should be ready to go. That we still look at this timeline then that's in that letter. So that by the first council meeting in March, on March 5th, the council would have some proceedings ready to order construction. You'd set that bid letting date. And we go ahead and receive bids then. This proposes on April 11. Couple days for them to review the bids, and then the council would take action on that on April 16. Another 20 days to a month to get all their contracts and bonds in place, and they look at that at May 7th, and then get ready to roll with the project. So I asked Bob about, you know, where we sit relative to other projects. And he said, this quote, "Nothing's moving, so we're still ahead," he says. And nobody else is in any better situation than we are. Said Beanster and Kim has 14 projects, and we are the quickest one out the door, he says. So of his stuff that's pending, we're still about, the city's impressed with this.
But he's not the only engineer. Because we won't do this in November, so the bids will be better. Now we're gonna get stuck with a late bid. How many thousands more that gonna cost us?
Other than, like you said, nobody's bidding. I mean, nothing's coming out of DNR.
Right.
You know, I guess that's the update as far as that goes. What's, I guess, what's the comments on that timeline?
I'm not sure what to do about it.
Not too much.
We've talked to DNR a couple times, but it doesn't seem to bring up much. And we're not talking to white people.
Isn't that kind of Beanster's job?
Yeah.
At some yes.
Should pass this round, so maybe get someplace to help out.
All right, well. That's it on that.
All we can do. Okay, resolution 1809 is we're gonna provide a notice for hearing of proposed specifications. Bill, anything you wanna do now? Tell us about the electric distribution line.
Everything's going in order, what they promised.
You pull out that big page, page number 14, pull that out. What happens in these highlighted areas there, Bill?
That's all the distribution line that's gonna get replaced in the clogs. And then the 48 or 9 meter poles are speckled out between the whole rural line. But that's only like 50,000 of the total project we need to pull.
All right, any, if there's any questions on the project?
Does everybody know it went out for bid last Friday? Last Friday, it went out for bids.
The packets are sent out now. This resolution.
Set the date.
Sets bid letting date, and then sets public hearing date on the plans and packs.
We have a motion on 1809.
I'll make it.
Roll call.
Okay, Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Moller. Great, thank you.
Okay, 1810, we're gonna award the bids tonight on the underground.
If you take a look at page 15.
Bill, all three of these guys have worked for us.
Right, everyone has worked for us.
You know.
Have full confidence in any one of the three.
This crew may show up.
I hope so.
Underground, nice crew.
They're also interested in our overhead job.
Oh, okay.
This Legacy was the one who did our big FEMA project, right?
Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right.
Legacy?
I'll second it.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Moller. Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
You're gonna be busy, Bill.
You're failing me.
We appreciate your efforts. Okay, ordinance 490 is our third reading of the sanitary sewer rates. Third and final reading.
Yep, third and final. No change.
From the pre.
I'm hoping that we don't have to do this again.
It should be very long. Your second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Moller.
So this is year four, though.
This is year four.
This is the last one.
Well, this is four out of, their next year is new year five.
Right, I know.
So plus whether they're that year six, which we've been led to believe is probably gonna happen.
Okay, we have Janet Frisbee and Mary Ann Monroe would like to be reappointed to the Historic Preservation Commission. Do we have that motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Roll call.
Moller. Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
They are approved. We want to talk about the summer employees.
Yeah. About time that we would normally get the ads out to seek our summer employees. You see on page two, at the bottom of page two, those would be the positions that we would like to fill. Look for campground attendants, that's one more than what we would have had last year. Well, we struggled with staffing and getting all the shifts filled without a bunch of overtime on there. Fourth one helps out as far as not having nearly so much overtime. Mini golf concession helper. The one summer parks worker. Two utility floaters, although Mike and Eric had shown interest in both coming back.
So like the campground.
Oh, excuse me, I just mentioned the wrong ones. Floaters. Floaters was Carter Pootens and Kleinsmith last year.
So how many hours do these, have any idea of the hours they get besides overtime? Normally, what do they hire on out so many hours or not?
Out for campground attendance? No guarantee of hours, but. But it'll vary from 20 to 40 during really busy times.
So how do you pay overtime or what?
We pay overtime.
After what? After 40?
After 40.
Oh, okay.
But if we approve, why not a patient?
So are you questioning that on how this is done with the union negotiations? Are these wages affected or not?
They're part-time and outside scope of the union.
And these two park workers at a base of $11 an hour, is that what they were paid last year, this past year?
No. That's the base wage, and Mike was almost 14, and Eric was 13-ish. And then harvest operators, but those two utility floaters, have you heard from Kleinsmith about anything at all? Michael Kleinsmith was one, and then Carter Pootens. Now, I guess my question to the council is those top two positions, campground attendant and the mini golf worker. Make a proposal to the council that we should try to increase that base pay. Their $8 an hour is part of the reason why we have so much trouble filling those positions.
Well, you say base hourly wage, but then that's not the wage, so explain that to me.
Just that it's been practiced that for every year that they would return, they'd get 25 cents an hour.
Okay, all right.
Provided they attend the safety meeting.
There you go.
Well, we gotta have to pay these people more. We're not gonna get anybody. We struggle all the time.
They're gonna get invaded now.
No, no. Every time we get them, we're lucky.
Well, I wouldn't go to Walmart and get what?
12.
They said 17 up at the store in life.
Really?
Because they can't find a help.
No. God, if somebody was mine, wouldn't be a big issue.
I was thinking maybe 10, but I don't know how that affects then all the others, what we're gonna do with those. $10 an hour isn't very much of a wage anymore.
True. You know, other than the summer jobs.
Yeah.
But like I said, we still struggle finding people to fill.
If we get down to, we got somebody that says, I won't work for that, at least we can come back to the council and say, we got somebody that we gotta pay them more. We've done that in the past.
I know, but like you have these, you know, like, well, for instance, I'm looking at Eric and Mike, and they've done a pretty good job, haven't they?
Yes.
We certainly don't wanna undercut them, you know, that's what I'm saying. If you raise one wage, I mean, we have to look at all of them.
Especially those, you know, they keep things going. I always think you don't wanna, if you got good help, you don't wanna lose it.
I'm sure they appreciate any consideration, but we have not heard from them about complaints about wages.
Because they're already up to room here.
Because of this 25.
Yeah.
You know, and both of them actually had larger bumps along the way. Kind of special bumps. Feds, yeah.
I'm waiting for you to expand.
Well, I got really nothing, other than they asked for more money and the council let approved it, had some.
More than the $11 base, is that?
Mike said, like I say, Mike's about 14, and Eric's like 13.
So why do we have this on here by those $11 an hour?
For hiring. If you got a new guy, they'd come in $11 an hour.
I see, okay, all right. Got it.
So we're thinking if we can go to $9 for the first two years, at least we can start the process and find out how many we get.
I guess that's all that I would ask for now, is if we can go $9 for attendance in the campground or in the mini golf.
So, or do we have like mandatory training sessions for them?
Just the one orientation in the string.
And, and is that gonna be?
We'll make sure that Mike attends.
Do they attend that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it is mandatory, you know, and people sometimes have scheduling issues, and then I've just worked individual sessions with them. And Mike's kind of fudged over the years.
So, so they are attending?
Generally speaking, yeah, but if you're talking about Mike, no.
What he's going to do this year?
Yeah, that's, you know, we have to do that. Possibly. You have a question? I mean, you're either gonna do it, or you ain't gonna get your license.
Right. And if we don't do this and something happens, then we're for it.
This is just a one-day thing?
Yes, it's a very morning.
Couple hours, a couple hours.
A very morning. I think they'd pay for it. They'd get paid to sit here and sort of.
No, I think that it should be enforced.
I think so, too.
If it's safety, I think it should be enforced, because if you have an accident down the road, then they're gonna say, well, we didn't receive any training. I mean, I'm not saying Mike would, but I'm just saying that that's a possibility.
A good lawyer will say that.
It'll be bought up.
So we need a motion to go ahead and advertise with the. So we need a motion to, uh, go ahead and advertise with the two of them bumped up to nine bucks?
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Reese?
Yes.
Tom's?
Yes.
Mulder?
Okay. We need a, uh, reviewer to set up, we need a public hearing for our budget, don't we?
Yeah, I do have, uh, a couple of things for you, let's just go through those changes, and that's just in the middle of page three. As we discussed at, at our last budget session, and there's only a few changes that were made to that draft. And these are then incorporated in there. Five thousand dollars from the hotel motel fund for that economic development organization. Fifty, excuse me, fifty thousand dollars from the general fund for that, uh, larger asphalt leveling of Seaco project. And then all of that fifty thousand dollar Camp Crescent project would be funded by the general fund. And then, uh, some of the current amendments, uh, for this current budget year. We transfer that hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the sewer fund. And that would happen at the end of this, uh, budget year. That commitment of, of ten percent for the, uh, for help out with the fish house. And the question to you, that we had discussed transferring this twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund to the garbage fund. Remember that discussion and whether we had decided we were gonna do that.
I thought we were, because we were gonna be short there, right?
We're, we're in the hole this year and, you know, likely will be, because we're gonna continue to raise assessments, for sure, or every year, and typically these are gonna go next year. I guess I, I would propose that we would do that, if that's all right with everybody, what's your plan on it?
More.
No, it will be a formal budget amendment, we usually do those people. But ask, uh, that we would go ahead, if, if there's any questions on budget, we sure can.
I have a question on the speed trailer. Cause obviously I missed that discussion, so can you enlighten me on that?
So, um, so this would be one of those, um, the radar speed trailer things that, that you can just put around in any, any of the areas in the neighborhoods? About an eight thousand dollar trailer, we would qualify for about four thousand dollars in funding through the governor's safety, traffic safety.
I think this, or do we have a need?
Joe? Or people?
I don't think we do any yet.
Uh, yeah, just, it's, you know, it's recommended, uh, from, from law enforcement as far as keeping speed properly top of mind more than anything else. We do get complaints about people speeding in neighborhoods, and this is one thing that you can do to try to address it.
Royce thought it was a good thing to do, at least try to slow them up there.
As long as you know it does not enforce laws, it just simply tells people to speed.
Right.
But doesn't mean that we're gonna be there able to do anything about it.
How long will we have this trailer?
It'll be on both of you.
One of the things I've seen in other cities that I work with is they'll put that trailer out for a week or two and then they will hard sit on it the next week, and then you get a lot less complaints from the citizens that, oh, I didn't know what the speed limit was, or I didn't realize, you know. And, uh, especially if you could, if it's out there for a while, it's really hard to come back and say, I didn't know what the speed limit was, or I didn't realize I was doing that fast. So it, it does have some kind of a deterrent or an education effect, is the only thing I, I've noticed about it. We use it lakeside a lot, and it does help, you know, even me, I know the speed limit, but sometimes they don't know how fast one is going.
Sac City has one, a lot of towns.
And they got one on the south side coming in there a lot.
Just a reminder of what you're supposed to slow up.
So is, so you move it to different places?
Blossom Street for sure.
That's the Speedway there. Well, we move it around town, we can take it to Walway and see.
Yeah, we, it just hooks onto the bumper hitch of the vehicle and take it wherever you want.
Sure. At least, at least we're making an effort to try to avoid it.
Yeah, we'll save the things like when there's a construct that's appeared, it might be nice to put one up there. Make people pay attention, I guess for stuff like that, it would be awful.
The school zones too, that's, that's one.
Oh, yeah.
No. I got one other thing for you guys.
I'm gonna set a date for the, what?
Yeah, that would be the action tonight if we're ready to move on, on the budget, it sets public hearing date as March fifth.
You want that motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mulder? Tom's?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Now you have information we'll all enjoy?
This is the meeting that's supposed to be Wednesday, no. Or this week, we had one that.
That's the union negotiations.
Oh, that's union. And that is?
Six o'clock on Wednesday. Yeah, six o'clock on Wednesday at seven. The notion has been brought up, and actually we've discussed this with the council on two or three times over the years, about, should we offer a second size garbage bag? Yeah, and this is raised oftentimes by older residents about, we have a thirty-three gallon bag right now, and it takes them several weeks to fill a bag. Uh, and when they do, you know, if the bag is full, it's oftentimes so heavy, they, they would have trouble handling it. So would the city ever consider having a smaller, second size garbage bag? There's some merit to it, we've never chose to do that.
So what does a bag cost, like, how many bags you have to buy at a time? I'm sure you gotta buy a bunch.
We buy twenty thousand, and that's about fills two-thirds of that room back there.
Is there a lot of difference in cost?
Boy, it's been a long time since I've even looked at it, when, and we were gonna get like five thousand of these smaller bags at one time, and, and they were a little bit more, cause you're not, not purchasing as many.
So then it, so then they don't have to pay as much for the?
You know, that would be the, the argument, and when we priced it last time, we used a fifteen gallon bag. And, uh, at the time, bags only cost a dollar, and then we still figured that we charged them more than half the cost, you know, we would've charged sixty-five cents. You know, bags cost two bucks now. If you wanted to look at a smaller bag, it still recommend that, you know.
Same price, two bucks, yeah.
Well, not necessarily, but probably a dollar fifty, you know.
So, but then, now you're having a hard time covering your garbage budget, removing money from the general fund in.
Yeah.
And now this is gonna reduce your income.
That concerns me, yes.
Plus now you're gonna have, or the, you know, I'm sure the grocery stores and that are gonna block it, carrying two different sizes. And then they're gonna sell one for the wrong price.
I, I talked to Chad, and he said, oh, we'd sell them, I think it would be very confusing, he says.
I think so too.
And then I also, I talked with, with Robbie Rudd too, you know, he was okay with whatever it is that you wanted to do, but, uh, it, like I say, financially in the garbage fund right now, we're not really sound. And if this were to happen, it would need to happen in a way that doesn't affect, um, revenue. So it, it would still cost proportionately more for a smaller bag than what it does for, for a full-size bag.
You'd better off to see what it was.
I think it was about the one size.
Yeah, it'll just confuse everybody.
What is a stack of, what is a stack of ten, right?
Stack, yeah, so they come in rolls of ten bags and they're two bucks a piece now, so twenty dollars for a roll of bags.
You have the same number of people, I would guess, that don't like the bags at all, and want to just pay a higher garbage rate and not have to do with the bags.
I heard that too.
Yeah, so you, you know, you have that actual population that wants to do that.
Part of the reasons for that is the land's alright.
Yeah, I say, we're, we're pretty much, we have to use some sort of modified, uh, unit-based pricing system. We're basically mandated to do that now, we're accountable.
So, I, I recommend just leaving it alone for them.
Okay. Was that, was that a motion?
Is that a motion? I connect a motion.
Okay. So the motion is, uh, just to remain with one bag, leave as is.
Roll call.
Okay, Tom's?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Mulder? Okay, um, in, in your council packet, it's the, uh, this, this notion about new email addresses for the city council.
Yeah, I would like to have that.
Okay, now they're set up, and I wanna start utilizing them for, for sending out, uh, city-related business. But that does mean that you guys need to set that up as a different email account when you go check your emails.
Right.
Okay?
Just add an account.
You just add an account. And I'll tell everybody what your passwords are, uh, cause you'll need to know that too, but, uh, I would like to get that set up, just, and it just has to do with public records.
Don't bring my phone in, you can do that, right?
We can look at it.
Huh?
I just had my assistant do mine today, so it's pretty hard.
Well, sorry.
You did, buddy.
No, I don't know nothing.
Especially if you have big fingers like you.
Yeah, no kidding, I don't buy small phones. James probably do it.
Yeah. Uh, it, just the public records.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm way on board with that, because there's nothing worse than having to sort through someone's personal emails when we're responding to a request for records, and we're getting more requests, it seems like, every year.
It's gonna be easier for us to keep them.
And here's the other issue, is bike arch. Gonna give a little update on, what's going on with bike arch?
The hometown pride of Larry's involved. And, uh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna take the bike arch down, we'll take it to Auburn, do a sandblast, repaint it blue, and put some, like the bikes that are down by the Jeremy Shulte memorial, who's gonna cut bikes out and put them on top instead of wheel bikes.
Oh.
Then we're gonna, hopefully, we're gonna raise it up three feet and put rock around there, and then we're working on some lighted letters that say Lakeview, Iowa, or Sockrail Trail, Lakeview, Iowa.
Yeah.
So when people take a picture of it, it not only says Sockrail Trail, it tells them where it's at. It's part of our first phase of bike arch area.
So you're gonna do the great big bike.
No, no, we're just, uh, we'll just do this here and, and, uh...
So what, have you come up with any different plans than where, and what, and what the archway look like?
No, not yet, the, except I talked to Tanner, I don't know, was that, was that Friday, Friday at noon, I think it was? And, um, he's not busy right now, so that, that's why we're gonna take it over there and he can start working on it. And we talked to him about some different designs, and he's gonna try to get something figured out, and we have, um, three school kids that are gonna try to get some designs worked up too.
So are they gonna look similar to the, to Jeremy's down there, or maybe not?
The bikes? Probably, I mean, some bike arch of some kind, I would think we try to make it a little different, maybe put a person on there, you know, so they look like they're driving, you know, maybe have it opposing, you know, something like that. That'd be my thought, but we don't, we don't have a plan yet.
But the school's working on drawing.
There were, I told the girls, and they were trying to get, Mr. McCullough was gonna, has computer program to do it, so they needed to find a couple of things out from him and get working on it.
We want to do it early, cause we want it ready for spring, and he's not busy, cause come spring, he'll be doing farm equipment, we'll never get it done, so. We're gonna cut it in half, and we, he's gonna put some plates on so we can weld it back together. So that, ten years down the road, when they do it again, they just gotta, they gotta take it down, it's, it's welded up there now, so.
So, are you thinking possibly it'll be at least two bikes up there? Or?
Well, the, we're trying to watch out for the weight, if we increase the height, we don't wanna have too much weight on the top, plus wind resistant, so we talked about four, but the sheets of metal that he makes the bikes out of are like, are like five hundred bucks a sheet, so if we start messing with that, we're gonna increase the price by a bit, at this point, I mean, you know, like I said, he needs, he, he needs a little, we need a little more time, I guess, it's pretty preliminary here, but.
Well, at least we get over there, get the sandblasted and powder coated, at least we'll have that done, so.
Can you do that before you weld all, or weld that bolt?
Nope, they'll put them all on.
It'll be all done before we, he's not gonna build a part, to particle this, so this'll just be like automotive paint, cement, stuff, the, um, streetlights.
I thought you said you could powder coat that. Try to cook that, don't you?
You gotta cook it, his oven's only six feet big.
Oh, well, then it gets.
We'd have to cut it a lot of pieces to do that.
Not doing that.
The, the big bike is still just, uh, some day planned, right?
Well, the thirsty carp is thinking that'd be a good idea, a big bike out there.
So have you mentioned that to Tanner, the big bike?
Yes, he's supposed to be getting a price for the thirsty carp.
Oh.
And the bar's looking, something like a, little Goldberg bike wheels that turn or something, so they both got something to do with bikes to draw somebody in.
Well, our, our other plan is to, to do some more stuff down there, so we thought we could put that whole plan together and maybe get a grant put together this fall. But we can tell you guys that already operate as the money for the bike arch, why we'll go ahead with that, and then we can try to get our other plan put together.
For grants.
But we wanna make sure that the bike arch and the rest of the plans all, you know.
Coordinated.
Coordinated, exactly.
With the big, the big addition to this plan, probably we're looking at a restroom facility down there. Which likely is south of the bike arch area, and probably on the east side of the trail, although we have some, maybe have some utility issues down there to, to work through, but we don't own the land on the west side of the trail, so Gus does.
We have to be careful of the Black Hills pipe, we can't build on top of that, so. We'll know that soon, won't we, with the, okay?
We just need to get a locate code.
And if you get to the, what the top over there, where the trail starts, that, then that's, uh, not our, our city ground either.
At that south part there, by Red Rocks?
Where the two, pardon, where we're at, or the next.
Yeah, the parking lot, and that's, that's all the cities.
Yeah, but, uh, where the, that trail starts up there, where Sockrail Trail, that's, what is that, uh, county?
You know, it's a little bit of the cities there too, that city property. At the parking lot property, there's a, there's a fence line on the south side of that property. Okay, there's an east-west fence line there, and that, and that is how far the city owns, more south.
It's been brought up, they'd like to have that parking lot bigger, cause if big trucks get in there with bikes, they can't back around, so just put some more gravel in there, make a bigger parking lot, south, so. And there's a little inflammation kiosk that doesn't look very, very good, so we're hoping the bike group has some idea how to tweak that.
It really needs to be some of that.
So, Sac County, uh, conservation, the, what the next two miles is Sac County Conservation.
Yeah, well, yeah, everything, jurisdiction of that, of the remaining part in, in Sac County is kind of Sac County Constitution.
So then, still, that'll never come across where the top, straight across there, they'll, they, you guys still?
You would never say never.
Well, I know that, but I don't, I mean, right now, never, right now.
It would, it would need to be voluntary with those property owners.
Right.
Yeah.
It sure helps if it went that way, but I don't know if they're open to that.
So people then went down, uh, on the square, really?
It turns out the bikes don't make a mess when you go down, they weren't gonna throw paper out when they went by anyway, but I think that was an issue years ago. I don't think they do that, so. Well, I, I was at city hall Friday afternoon, we were going, Dusty Rube came in and said that they got a guy that's supposed to come and clean the iron up in the next thirty days. So I told Royce and Bill, so if some stranger comes down, we know that they can, but we'll see if that all happens. It'd be good. You got Sac County League?
Yeah, just, uh, Sac, Sac County League is this Thursday, it's in Odebot. Are you able to go maybe?
Have fun, guys.
John, you there?
Hi.
I can't.
Nope. Okay, um, union bargaining is, is Wednesday at six here. And then planning ahead, Lakeview Coast Northwest Iowa League next Thursday, it's the fifteenth, and that's out of the park. And so, social time for that one starts at five.
Do we need a head count for that, don't we?
Yeah, we'll need a head count, so.
Everybody let Scott know. Anything else?
I got one thing that I, um, I always talk to with the law ordinance in this town, leash. And I talked to Rose about that, needs to be in the park.
We have, we have leash, or you have to have them in command or something, is that?
Yeah, you mean, like when somebody's with them, or they can't just run a lard?
Listen, you have to manage a big dog.
The question is, in the park, is that the question, or anywhere?
On our property, a, a big dog would not back away, it ends up two of them.
Uh-oh.
Oh, we don't know what that was.
Anyway, they, no, they can't run a lard anyway. They can't be without their owner.
And? Are you still there, Tammy?
We're, I'm, we're seeing more and more
Okay.
Of the big dogs running around.
Anytime, night, just all the time?
Well, this is at ten o'clock at night.
They run at night, I think, you know, people let them out.
Don't hesitate to, or even call my cell phone if you want, I mean, don't hesitate to call.
I'd rather have the cell phone, I hate to, it's kinda like this camera, you know.
You can call my cell phone anytime, or, or, I mean, whoever's working, you can call.
Yeah, and there's a lot of people have scanners, and I don't think that's a good idea.
They would just let them up.
Yeah, I mean, you can get, we can give you copies of our schedule too, it doesn't matter, you can call whoever's working, it's no big deal, but, no, they can't be running a lard.
Well, this was quite a deal, she'd come and went back to the living room, I was, you know, kinda waiting, I don't know how long it usually takes, and I and she was knocking on the window and yelling for me to come at night, so I went out and threw a cooler at the goddamn thing.
Yeah, yeah, don't hesitate to call, because typically, if I see one running around, I'm not gonna grab it, because it might be in somebody's.
If I had a ball bag, it'd be better.
But they don't have to be on the leash when they're on the trail, on the county, that's what I was told.
That's right.
Out, outside.
We run into that too with the bikes.
Yeah, it's tits big, it's the city ordinance, so.
Yeah, I don't think the county on the trail, they do not have to be.
You know, and another, one other thing is, you know, I hate to be another complainer about these stop signs, I tell you, it's an epidemic in this town.
People aren't stopping?
You that, it is, it's just, it's out of hand, I think.
Yeah, it is.
It's slow and dull.
It is, but it's hard to enforce too, though, because they, they see us.
I know.
Yeah, it is bad.
It is, it's, it's slow and dull.
I have heard complaints about, you know, during school, when they're, you know, going and leaving school on that high street, you know, under the by dock there.
Yep.
It ain't school kids.
I mean, this was the.
It's people that know that shouldn't know better, you know. And I think, I just think it's, you know, this idea of not picking anybody up, cause you don't want them to come back to town, well, you know, if we have people that run the stop signs, do we need them?
Well, yeah, it's, there are a few places we can kinda hide and watch, a lot of them, it's just hard to, hard to tuck in.
Come in our living room.
Yeah.
Watch them all day long.
Well, certainly, if they're, well, a stop sign from the police, they're probably gonna get taken.
Well, yeah, if we see it, they get stopped, but, yeah, the, the hard part is, they see us a mile away, we look pretty visible. And we don't let unmarked cars, cause that's a bad idea too.
No. But I just wanted to mention that, I think, I think it's getting worse all the time.
Pass it on to Royce.
Okay.
I, I kinda talked to Royce about it too, but I, I think it's something that needs to be taken care of.
Talk to him again. The motion to adjourn?
Go ahead.
He deserves it, thank you.
Alright, so the, the weather's nice down there, Tammy?
Oh, seven eight degrees today.
Oh. Hey, we're pretty close here, we, we had seven inches of snow today.
I heard that.
Not nice here.
Nice snow, it was nice snow though.